Inkster City Council Meeting for Monday, February 19, 2024 is called to order. Everyone please stand for the prayer. Pastor Clemens.
Let us bow our heads. Lord, as we come in this season, a season of building, the season of equipping, and the season for next level preparations, we give you things. We ask that you wrap your loving arms around our mayor. Each and every council person that is in this building, we ask your blessing upon all officials, those elected and those that are appointed. Put a hedge of protection around each and every one of them, and we will forever give your name the praise. The name that is above every name. The name that when it's called, every knee shall bow. We ask this. In his name, we pray. Let every heart together say amen.
Thank you. Now we'll do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Nolan.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm.
Present.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
Present.
Councilman Bishop.
Present.
Councilwoman Scott.
Present.
Councilwoman Howard.
Here.
Councilwoman Richardson.
Present.
Mayor, you have a form.
Jerome, chair broke. Come on. You're on call 24 hours.
Two wheels.
Two wheels?
Too long, folks. That's like a cat.
Everybody have a chance? Look at the agenda. Do we need to add anything, take anything off? So on the agenda, we, under new business, we have item A. And you see a number nine, that's gonna be item B. See a number 10, that's been changed to item C. And number 11 has been changed to item D. So if everybody's okay with the agenda, do we have a motion to approve?
Some move.
Second.
We properly moved the second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. We have a presentation from Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Nu, Zeta Chapter of Inkster.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for allowing us to be on your agenda tonight. My name is Rosella Townsue. I am a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, Zeta Nu, Zeta Chapter. Our service area is the city of Inkster. Our founders are Arizona Cleaver Simmons, Pearl Anna Neal, Myrtle Tyler Faithfull, Viola Tyler Goins, and Fannie Petty Watts. Our principles are scholarship, service, sisterhood, and finer womanhood. So I'm here this evening to discuss our scholarship. So as I stated, Zeta Nu, Zeta Chapter, we have a scholarship. Last, over the last two years, we gave over $25,000 to Inkster residents and Wayne County residents. So this year, we have three scholarships available. One of it is strictly for residents of the city of Inkster. The other scholarship is for our youth auxiliary. And then the other scholarship is our General Z Hope Scholarship. The scholarships are due by March 15th. Again, scholarships are due March 15th. And you can find the scholarship on our website, And I left a lot of our flyers here. So if you can post it around City Council or distribute it to any high school seniors that maybe wanna apply for our scholarship. So again, thank you so much, and the due date is March 15th.
Really quick, can you also email it to us so we can post it on like social media and mail it to many of our students as well?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a lot of money. Okay, no public hearings tonight. Consent agenda?
Some move. Support.
We properly moved supported. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. We have no previous business. Ordinance, we do have a second reading and approval of the City of Inkster's towing ordinance.
Some move.
No, not yours.
Oh, to remove off the table?
Did we table that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So motion to remove off tables pending. Do we have a second? Alright, so we properly moved the second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Off the table. New business. Back to where we were. Go ahead.
Consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels.
No, 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 no. Aye.
You told me no.
Consider approval of the City of Inkster towing ordinance.
Some move.
Uh, Mr., I just wanna stay on the record. I'll be upstanding my vote for this.
Okay. Alright, Councilman Bishop will not be voting on this matter. You had a motion, you said?
Some move.
Alright, with the changes we spoke of earlier? Alright, there's been a motion to approve the towing ordinance with the changes we spoke about at orientation, which, let's go ahead now. Let's put on the record.
Um, the amount under section, was it two?
I think, 2A.
2A, uh-huh, was for $125. And then I believe the waiting charge was for $60.
And that's 2A3.
2A3.
So instead of $50, it's $60. And section 2A, instead of 120, it's 125. Those are the fees for towing. So there's a motion to approve that with those changes? We had a second?
A second.
Okay. So we properly moved the second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Consider approval to purchase two vacant parcels. The parcel is located on the north side of Hopkins Street, between John Daly Street and Bayhand Street. Noted, duly noted, and duly noted, purchase totaling $2,500.
Your motion?
Some move.
Second. We properly moved the second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Adopt ordinance to provide for acquisition, construction, installation, furnishing, and equipping of additions and improvements to the water supply system of the city and authorize the city clerk to publish the notices of intent to issue bonds for the water supply system.
Some move.
Support.
We properly moved and support it twice? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes.
Adopt ordinance to the Clean Water State Revolving Fund Program and authorize the city clerk to publish the notices of intent to issue revenue bonds for water supply and sewage disposal system improvements.
Move for approval.
Second.
We properly moved the second. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes. Public participation. Remember to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Sandra Wiley.
I may, I may need a couple more minutes just to fill my... Okay, the first thing I would like to ask is in reference to the water bills that we got two of this month, which is terribly shocking. But one was an actual reading. The other one was an estimate. And my estimate is higher than my normal reading, which is consistent. So if you're going to estimate my bill, it would be preferable for you to estimate it at what I'm used to using or what you're used to reading. Or either you need to come out and read my meter so that I can pay what I owe instead of what you want me to pay. So what I would like to know is how I go about getting an actual reading. I don't mind paying that, but I'm not paying your estimate because it seems to be what you think instead of what is. And I have a track record of is-its. So I would prefer you use the is-its. Okay? Now, my second item is I would like to know if the city had anything to do with a calendar that was passed out at the Inkster, at the State of the City address. Were you in collaboration with that calendar?
I think the Chamber of Commerce did that.
So that's all them, correct? Okay. Well, I would like to tell you that I'm extremely disappointed by the information that was given on that. To me, the calendar has always been a wealth of information and the aspirations and inspirations for us moving forward. In fact, since I became involved in the city, I have collected and kept them. I have one from 1997 here that says, "Visions of Progress on Courts." I have, and they go on and on, but I have one here that says, "Working Together to Make It Better." Then I have one here that says, "People Who Care." Okay? And that's, then I have one from, what? This one says, "2010, You Can Be the Key to Our Success." Okay, fast forward to 2024. And this is what I was given. Can you all see that?
You got 315 on there.
It says, "318 North, Michigan's premier provisionary center. Now it has its own metalwork and recreational facility."
That's a point thing.
Then it has the address, then it has the dollar.
Is this what we've become?
No, we didn't do that.
I understand that, but obviously you let somebody define you. And this is what they've done. Now, we have been defined by outside people all our existence here in Inkster. They say there's a lot of crime, but us who live here, we don't see people running down the street shooting unless they came from some other city. So are we going to accept this? Because the calendar also has a wealth of information in it. It has all the departments, fire, police, or it used to. This one has absolutely nothing in it about the city. It doesn't have the clerk's office in it, doesn't have DPW. And these are where we get these calendars to look up this information. This is what we use. There's nothing in here about this. I mean, this calendar.
Ms. Wiley.
Would have done better by going to the dollar... Oh, excuse me, Dollar Twenty-Five store. So I am, like I said, I imagine the cover...
You have four minutes.
I have four minutes. This isn't important enough.
No, no, you're at four minutes.
Okay, well, just to continue for... I'll make it as brief as I can, but I think this is too important to be relegated to time constraints. I understand that everybody has something to say, but this is our, this is us. This is our community. And so I brought this tonight to give it back because it's of no value to me. And I assume he got this cover because he paid the most, alright? So there's always like finances first, okay? Or dollars before dignity. How about that? Or greed before greatness. Money before morals. Do we need to go on? Okay, good. So I'm going to stop by saying you can have that back. I don't want that. And let you know that Inkster can do better. And also, there's some things that just aren't for sale, okay? Thank you.
Alright. Vidia Cerros? Cerros?
Cerros. Hello, yes, my name is Vida. And how you doing this evening?
Good.
And this is my first time coming to the meeting.
Welcome.
Okay, what I'm concerned mostly about is, well, we had the water price change during the summer of 24, 23. And during that time, you know, all the big trucks come around and after they finish, you know, the streets was just a mess. So we got notices and I think it was in December or the late part of November in '23 that the street was gonna be repaid. And I was like, oh, great, we gonna get new streets, you know? So, but now they was repaid, but it's just dirt and gravel. So now we got a bunch of mud and steel holes and you can't walk in the street or you're driving the street, your car is getting dirty, the concrete is getting dirty. It's just a mess now. So I was just wondering, was that just temporarily? Was that the first step of repaving the street? Or is it gonna be finished with concrete or what? On North River Park Drive. That's, yeah, North River Park. Pardon me?
We're looking at doing something different this spring on that street. I'm well aware of the potholes and everything on that street. So we're looking at doing something different.
Well, now it's just dirt and gravel.
I know.
So you have to go around five miles an hour because it's really rough going down. And then it's really muddy. Because when it rains or it's snow, you get more potholes.
I made talks with our engineer. We're trying to figure out something different to level off that street.
Okay, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
April Gere.
Good evening, Mayor Nolan, Council, and community.
Good evening.
I am representing the Wesleyan A. Bennett Foundation. We have a Kickstart Reading Event, which is going to be March 2nd, a Saturday, at the Leanna Hicks Public Library. And our theme is "Let the Adventure Begin." So we're looking for young explorers ages five to 11. If you have children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, please come out. And just Wesleyan A. Bennett was my grandmother. She taught in Inkster for more than 27 years. She, she may have been someone's kindergarten teacher that's maybe on the council now. But she's well-known and people in the audience. But well-known, growing up, she always had activities for kids to do and we wanna provide experiences that last a lifetime. She's also the sister of former chief Anderson C. Young that the building is named after. She helped raise him. So just if people can come out, bring your children, we just wanna do things to give people something that's memorable, children and their families. Thank you very much. We have flyers noon until 2:00. And we'll have prizes, food, and good fun. And we do, we are gonna have some members from Zeta Phi Beta do a little reading with the whole thing. And other community people, come on out. We thank you.
Thank you. Akendelay.
Greetings, everyone.
Greetings.
For those who don't know me, I am Akendelay Akinyemi. I'm the president of the Board of Directors for the Leanna Hicks Public Library. Standing next to me is this superstar. This is Ms. Amisha Harajon. She is our new library director. Go ahead and clap. She is already up and running, moving the library in the right direction. Of course, we had some challenges finding a director. We finally found her. We snatched her up from Ypsilanti. I met with the, I just happened to see Mayor Brown from Ypsilanti over the weekend. She was like, stop taking our people, bringing them back to Inkster. So, no, we're happy that she's here. She's gonna be working with our community very closely. She's gonna bring some cultural development, some technology, and just some excitement to the Leanna Hicks Public Library.
Anthony Sherrell.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and fellow Inksterites, as we call it. And I'm just here to ask a couple of questions today. Nothing real rough. A couple of questions I got answered by speaking to some of the different people. One of them was ordinance. And some of the people needed to know about some of the ordinance because I didn't know there was a leaf ordinance where you needed to get it up, just like you do your snow. And I'm sure a lot of residents don't know it, but I keep my yard clean, but I get everybody else is down the block. And it's really gotten bad now that the weather's starting to change. So that was just one thing I wanted to address, but I got that taken care of and I know who to talk to. Other thing was, one, what are we doing about the deficit? Because we really don't have any idea. I know you can't cut your way out of a deficit, but that affects all of us because that's on our tax bill, whatever, you know? Whatever they decide to do is gonna come out of our pockets one way or the other.
Absolutely.
So I wonder if we could, we could find some clarity on that. One of the biggest thing I wanted to say is, I'd like to get a copy of the city charter. And that could answer a lot of questions that saved me from being up here asking you guys.
You can pick one up at the clerk's office.
At the clerk's office? Okay, great, great. That's something that's, that's new. Thank you, thank you for that. One other thing, I still haven't received my absentee ballot. My neighbors got theirs and I came in and gave my name, but I'm not waiting. I'm coming in asking questions every week.
You just come in and vote.
You can come in and vote.
You come in and vote.
Well, you know, that's why I do the absentee ballot.
Well, you here, no?
Yeah, but you know, my God-given right... Oh, wait a minute, did God give it to you? Okay, alright, alright. But anyway, that's pretty much most of the things I wanna... Oh, one other question. Vivins? When are we gonna get our meters? I mean, because I know you said you got a line on wherever you want. Is that correct? Because I'm being estimated. You know, you know it was coming. Like many others, I'm getting estimated as well.
They just passed me, go out for bond. They just passed the orders and bond for me to go out and get the money so we could purchase the meter. So we're looking at sometime late summer.
What, you say next summer?
Installation. This summer, but late in the summer for installation.
Okay.
So steps we have to go through to secure the money now.
Okay, yeah, like the other lady that spoke earlier. And I pulled all my old bills and looked at what I use. I'm home, I'm a single person by myself. And I use two, three meters, two, two units. Then I'm estimated at four. So, you know, I was told just pay what you normally pay and, you know, and it should be okay as long as you collect your old bills. But the thing is, you know, that number, the deficit side is getting greater and greater every month. You know, I don't wanna get in a situation where, you know, you owe $300 or $400, but according to what I've used, it's only 200. So where do we go from there? I'm sure a lot of people had that same question. That's called a hot seat. But anyway, that's it. And I just wanted to thank you, Council, and thank all the new people that are here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Jesse Shelby.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
My question was, I think I didn't hear the answer. Do we have early voting here in Inkster?
Yes.
Where is it at?
Clerk's office.
Only here at City Hall?
Yes.
And the time is when you open?
Yes, and the weekend.
Monday through Friday is 8:30 to 4:30. We're also open Saturday and Sunday, 8 to 4, up until the 25th.
Well, good. I'm glad to hear that because we didn't get any notice on that. Or maybe you did it at the mayor's speech.
Oh, yeah, we can talk about it a little bit.
And we didn't get the notice about your meeting with the citizens until last Thursday. It was in our water bill. And it was over. Well, that was the only question. I came to thank the city. I know Denise Champagne is dead and gone, but the program is still good. And I'd like to say thank you for having us because now as a citizen, I have begun to benefit from it. Because the riders that come and pick us up to take us to our appointments, they are so nice. And they help us out getting in and out of the van and open the doors for us to go into the buildings. So I came to thank Council and Mayor and let you know that we as citizens need to give thanks for some of the good things that you're doing instead of all of the bad things. So that's what I'm here for, to thank you. As a citizen, it's benefiting me very much. And the other thing is to Mayor and you and your wife, we as citizens still have you in our prayers for your bereavement. And we have lost another citizen in our city, Fannie Johnson. And she was a fighter for this city and the school system along with me. So her service will be at Amateur Church on Friday at 11:00. The family of an offender at 12:00. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm glad she announced it. I'm glad she announced it. Okay. City Clerk.
Only thing I have is just regarding early voting. It started on the 17th. We were here on the 17th and the 18th, Saturday and Sunday, from 8 to 4. This week is 8:30 to 4:30. If you wanna come in and do your absentee ballot, you wanna do your application or you can just come through the back, through here and actually do your voting. And that's up until the 25th. That's it.
We don't have a city treasurer. Mayor and Council Communication. Who wants to start this? You can't start with the oldest person?
Yes, you can. I have flyers out. Okay. District 6 is hosting Safe and Stable Homes Matter. It's a foreclosure prevention and informational community forum. It is Saturday, March 2nd, from 11:00 to 2:00 at the complex. We will have Eric Simbri there and he will bring people that if you need to make arrangements or talk to someone about your property taxes, this is the time to do it. Also have Wayne County Commissioner David Kneecik and a representative for Senator Poehke's office. Also, a representative from Rashida Tlaib. There is a lot of grants that are available and they're gonna have information for that. We'll also have Mishda there. We'll have the Red Cross there. Home buyers information where some of you may be looking to buy a home. They have down payment information. And I just want to get us knowledgeable about what's out there that we can get. Other communities, they get the grant money. We don't. So it's just time for us to be aware of what we may be entitled to, things that we can do. They're gonna also have information if you need to get your home fixed, maybe roofing or some of the seniors may need help in their homes to fix up things. I need you to come. And it's not just for Inkster. All of us, surrounding cities, I would like for you to come. I want us to be knowledgeable of what's available. Please take a flyer there, any information, my number's on it, and you can give me a call. I also have, and that was the good news. I have complaints. Pope business. I do, this letter was put in my mailbox and I'm gonna read it. It says, "Dear Inkster Mayor and City Council, As a lifetime Inkster resident, I feel the water situation in our citizen is both abusive and completely unethical. First, it has been ridiculously long and inexcusable that we wait all this time for new accurate water meters. Whoever has hired to replace these meters should have been fired and replaced a long time ago by a city governing body and its residents. You need to have the residents in the best interest. The fact that our leadership has not resolved this issue by now is deplorable. Although this problem was not initiated by this administration, it does not excuse the fact that no progress has been accomplished and no end in sight." Although this problem was not initiated by this administration, it does not excuse the fact that no progress has been accomplished and no end in sight. This problem looks like a shakedown on residents from the city government. I received a January bill that states the due date is January 29th, 24th. However, I didn't receive the bill until February 15th, well after the due date, which caused to be unfair penalties to be paid. It is wrong and unethical. He's also in here complaining that, um, he received the bill February 15th carrying over the January unpaid bill in February for a total of 178,000, uh, $178.07. And neither of these bills are correct because my meter has been checked by the city and it's been verified that it's not operating properly. I can go on, but I'm not. I also have a complaint from another citizen here. And they're complaining that from, they're being overbilled from January 1st, 2024 to January 31st, 2024. They received an $890 water bill. Also, another citizen also received overcharged, they feel from 12/1/23 to 12/31/23. And their bill was $492 for a month. So I'm getting calls about the double bills. One of the things they were saying that, um, I guess they came up and talked to people in the city. And they were saying it wasn't their problem that the water bills went out and there were double bills. But as the citizens said, there should have been something in the bills to say, um, there was a mistake. So that's why this bill is late, just being transparent. Also, um, these people are saying they went through their homes, there's no leaks, no leaks at all, but they're being charged. And that's why orientation are brought up about the water bills, the water meters, because people are complaining that they're too high. And they are. And the thing is, when they don't pay this, it goes on to their taxes and it goes downtown to the county on their taxes. So there's issues here. So I don't know what we can do about it. Uh, uh, these people, make sure you come to my thing here. To see if we can work things out, however, it is a serious problem and I don't know what it is that we can do about it. Uh, one of the things that they suggested, especially on their water bill, that they got late, you got late fees on it. They feel that should be waived. I agree.
They already waived.
Okay, well, I guess we gotta let the people know. Your late fee is waived. Did you hear the beer? Okay. But we still need to do something about the high bills. They're, they're just too high. That's, that's my concern. So hopefully somebody get back so I can address these people. Thank you.
Councilwoman Howard, welcome back.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I don't have any, I have one thing to, um, the resident that Ms. Shelby was seeing, Fanny Johnson. I, I apologize, I forgot to tell the mayor to recognize her at the beginning of the meeting, so thank you. I do, would like for her information to be on the website so everybody can see. Uh, she will be missed. Uh, another thing to have, uh, thing I want to talk about, the yards, it's getting warm. Things have been left out since the winter. Can we please just start picking up in front of our yards? It doesn't take that much effort to go outside and pick up debris. We shouldn't have to ride down the street and see logs from way back when just sitting up there. Cut them down. Compost, I'm not sure when it's going to restart. But we need to do something.
First Monday in April.
First Monday in April, thank you, thank you, Mr. Vivins. But we need to cut them down and put them until compost starts because the city is really looking bad. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rutledge.
No comments tonight, mayor.
Councilwoman Bishop. Councilwoman Scott. Oh, wow. Mayor Pro Temp, I know you got some.
Just one thing, um, following up on the zoning board of appeals that Councilwoman Richardson has been beating me up about.
Yes.
I'm glad that you admitted that. Uh, we're jointly working, just trying to get the result, get it resolved. We have some vacancies and some appointments and everything took place. However, regardless of the fact, if there's anybody interested in serving on the zoning board of appeals, please let myself or Councilwoman Richardson know. Um, so we can assist with getting you properly placed. We desperately need, I know, at least one or two more people.
I actually have an appointment for, uh,
She wants to be reappointed, but it wasn't in our package, so I just waited.
Got you, okay. We have some vacancies kind of sort of, so that's what we've been trying to work.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
I was saying, same, it wasn't in the package, so I didn't bring it up.
Right, right, that's why I did, right.
Appointments tonight or not.
Yeah, we did, it wasn't on the agenda either.
Right, it wasn't on the agenda, so that's why I didn't bring my, my.
We're trying to reconcile and get it all correct so we can know where we're at.
So I'm just pleading with the listening audience and the rest of the public, please, please spread the word. A lot of times when we get to these things with the zoning board of appeals or other variances that we need, we need a full body so we can make a sound decision for the community. And when you don't have a full body and a change is made and people are reactive instead of proactive to the situation, um, they could have been involved on the front end. And so that's why we're putting that plea out. So anybody that's interested that knows they desperately want to serve, please see us. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp, I, I just had a question. Are we still doing where they have to complete their, um, application at the clerk's office?
Yes, if they're, if they're new, yes, they will need to complete the application submitted to the clerk's office. And if it's someone who's already been in the circuit, then of course we already have their information on file. But if they would like to fill it out again, just update it to show us their enhancements, then that's fine as well.
And the problem we have is, and the problem that we were having is getting people in our district to serve on certain things. So sometimes we have to go outside of our district to get people that want to serve.
All right.
I could be a pro temp.
Uh, one more, uh, announcement. Retired police officer James Horn, James Bubble Horn, passed away. His, uh, service is going to be February 26th, 2024 at New Hope Baptist Church. That's on Michigan Avenue and Wayne. Family hour is going to be at 10:00 AM, funeral is at 11:00 AM. Husband, the first viewing is Saturday, Jan, February 24th at Husband Family Funeral Home on Wayne Road and Westland. That's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Second viewing is on Sunday, February 26th, uh, at New Hope Baptist Church and that's from 2:00 to 5:00 PM. Yep.
The 26th of February is Monday. You mean the 25th?
The 25th, Sunday.
Okay.
It's the second viewing.
Okay, okay.
So they have two viewings and then the funeral is on the next day on Monday.
Okay.
Repass will be following the funeral services will be held at Local 900 on Michigan Avenue and Wayne, Michigan. You know, everybody knows Bubble Horn worked for us for a long time, well respected, very well known in his community. So he will be missed. Uh, let me try to address questions I can. Commission, I just want some, Ms. Shelby was talking about thanking us, uh, for the senior program. It's actually a commission on aging, so I don't want us, we're not trying to take credit, we didn't do anything. We appoint commission on aging, but other than that, they do the work. So they should definitely get the credit. We have a lot of issues. We had a lot of issues with the water bills. First, I want to apologize, we had a printing problem with the company that we use. So essentially we turned in our information, we have to turn in our information by the ninth of every month, which is, you know, the water bill information. And then they print and send them out to you. The reason why you received the state of the city announcement, because they were supposed to go out, oh man, they were supposed to go out in January. We sent it in Jan, January 9th. They were supposed to go out that next week in January, so you would have a few weeks' notice before the state of the city. Well, they claimed they had a problem on their end with computer or something and the bills never went out in January. And as you can see, you have, you received two bills basically on the same day, the second week of February after the state of the city was over. So not only that we, you know, we pay roughly $6,500 a month to send those bills out. So now we have a bill that went out at the same time the next month's bill went out. That's a problem. We also pay extra to put the notice in for the state of the city. So we're trying to work that out because I, I, we feel like we shouldn't have to pay either for January because they didn't go out like they should have. All the late fees for the January bill are all waived. So if you see the wait late fees, just subtract them for what you send in and send in your normal payment because the mistake was on us. And it's still our fault because we're the ones who send the bill out. So I'm not trying to dodge responsibility, but it was an independent printing company. We looked at outsourcing it, changing companies because we can't have problems like this. I don't remember ever having a problem quite like this, but this is major. You know, people are used to getting their bills on the same day every month. So I got several phone calls, how come, you know, very rarely do people call and ask for a bill. But in this case, they, they did. Like, where's my water bill? What's going on? And we kept calling the company, like, oh, it's being processed. You know, that's stall talk. I mean, they said that for a long time. So that's our fault, I have to apologize for that. Again, the late fees are waived on that. The, the problems with the water bills, they've been happening for a decade. We've had these water meters for 10 years. They've never worked properly, never. A good proportion of our people are getting estimated bills, that's just a guesstimate, you know? Based on how many people live in your house or it should be based on how much water you normally use, but I don't know what the system's doing. It has a mind of its own. Like again, it's, the meters don't work properly, the system doesn't work properly. We paid $5.5 million for this system that never worked. And people, I think one of the comments was, it's a shame that we haven't fixed this. We just finished paying for them not too long ago, you know? So now we finished paying off the 5.5, we have to spend another 3.5 to replace the system. So we're going out of world backwards as you can see. And most people don't understand, meters should last longer than 10 years. When you pay that kind of money, meters should last longer. So the whole point of getting a new system was so we didn't have to have meter readers to send people to your house and read your meter. They're supposed to transfer, transmit the information directly to city hall. It never worked right. The meters we are buying, are buying now are tested. Several other communities have them, they work great. You know, technology has gotten better, so the prices come down a little bit, but it's still very expensive. So we got, we just approved the bond tonight, so we're going to move forward, buy the new meters, try to get them installed as soon as possible so we won't have these problems anymore. Because, you know, it's serious. You're getting $800 water bills and you know you didn't use that much water. And all we've been doing for years was just adjusting them because we knew the system wasn't working properly, we just adjusted. So again, that's on us, that's on the city, but we bought bad equipment. You know, I don't know what else to say about it. Calendar, I'm not taking responsibility for that calendar. We didn't do it. But if it's the will of the people that we do a calendar every year, then that's what we'll do. That's what you want us to do. You know, it's kind of a question, are we responsible for doing a calendar every year? Is that a function of your government? Do you want your taxpayer money to go towards the calendar? Do you want two of our staff members working on the calendar? If they, if, if it's yes, we'll do it because we work for you, so.
Do we have money allocated for that?
Oh, I have no problem with you doing it.
She didn't say that when she was on council.
Okay, Steve ready to go home. When the mayor Pro Temp speaks.
I have some question for you too, once you get finished.
Okay, so we can talk about that. Hey, we, we work for you. So whatever he wants to do, we're going to do. Uh, we'd be happy to turn that over to a committee from, of residents. We might even support it with a couple of dollars, but whatever we need to do, let's figure out what we need to do.
Also, like, turn your comments and concerns into the people that are currently doing it as well. I'm sure they would appreciate feedback, um, and input on the calendar as well. So before we completely take it on as a city, um, and take it from someone who's already doing, who's been doing it for years. It's okay to share your feedback, good, bad or ugly, um, because we're human, we don't always get everything right.
We used to do it. The city used to do it. And then we did it in conjunction with the chamber and I think this one, for whatever reason. Just a chamber.
Last, uh, last term.
Right.
Nothing, nothing was done, no, nothing was done.
It was in conjunction.
But it, no, it wasn't with conjunction with this?
Yes, it was.
Was it?
Yes.
2023 was? Okay, I thought it was just 2022.
So, you know, we'll look at whether it makes more sense for us to do it. Because it did look different and a lot of information that we need, like to have our calendar was not there.
2023, yeah, but not, not from 2023 for not for 2024, calendar, it wasn't.
That's 2024.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Okay.
And then Mr. Anthony asked about the deficit. Well, we're still trying to figure out exactly how big the deficit is.
Wow.
Because we're currently doing audit prep for our 22, 23 audit. Usually it's done around Thanksgiving after the fiscal year ends. It's due to the state by December 31st. That did not happen. So now we're still doing audit prep just so we can start the audit process to get it done. We will not receive our state revenue sharing until we finish our audit. We will not get reimbursements on our grants, we won't be doing anything until we finish our audit. Because that's the way the state works. Unfortunately, we're behind, we got behind. We just finished the one for the year before at the end of this year. So things got terribly behind, not sure what happened, but we're going to get it fixed and move forward. So that's where we're at. We can't cut our way out of it, but we, we still got to cut. So I'm looking to cut about $800,000 from this upcoming year's budget. So it's going to hurt and you're going to see it. So we, we're going to have to figure out more efficient ways to do things because we have to cut, but we have to increase revenue. And so that means we got to build houses, we got to build businesses, we got to get tax dollars from businesses who are not paying taxes. We talked about a little bit that today. So we're going to move forward, become more aggressive, we're writing violations, building violations, try to get people to fix these buildings they have sitting, they can in our community. So, you know, we will figure it out. If you have any ideas, we love to hear them. I mean, I wish we could just open a business and figure out a way to just make money like a bit, but we are a government, so we can only do certain things. But we will have to figure out how to increase our revenue, there's no way around it. I mean, we are aggressively going after grants. You know, I was in a meeting today with Councilwoman Rutledge, we're aggressively going after grants. We will bring money into the city. Um, it just hasn't, we haven't done it over the last several years as much as we could have, that's what I'll say. So we're going to do that because we have to, we don't have a choice. So hopefully I addressed everything. If not, you know my phone number, just call me. I'll send Lebo over to your house to fix everything. But remember, it's still Jerome's fault, no matter what it is. All right, that's all I have, guys.
One, one question for you. Um, we did a present, presentation, was it last year, Mr. Vivins, on what the water meters that you are trying to purchase? Are we still going with those same? Okay, so if we can get the new council a copy.
Presentation.
Of the presentation for, so they know, understand what I'm, what we buying because they don't have that. Okay, okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
One thing, okay, these people with the high water bills, what do you suggest?
You got their numbers, just call them, talk to them.
Okay.
So at least tell them what's going on.
Okay.
All right, thank you, anybody got any? Motion to adjourn?
Some more.
They've probably moved the second, all those are favorites, say aye.
Aye.
Hold's name. That's a good meeting, let's now.